Welcome to the start, welcome to today's virtual cabinet meeting. Before we start the formal business of the meeting, I must remind you that the audio of this meeting is being live broadcast on the council's website and the video of the meeting will be published afterwards. And I would like to introduce the officers supporting today's meeting. The councillors in attendance will be introduced shortly. So we have Mike Hill, Chief Executive, Alison Ball, Assistant Director of Finance, Mike Avery, Assistant Director of Planning and Regeneration, Helen Barrington, Director of Organisational Development and Democratic Services. We have Joanna Gray, Service Manager for Planning Policy. And also joining us will be Grant Islet, Health, Safety and Emergency Planning Officer. And finally, myself, Caroline McCleary, Democratic Services Officer and Clerk of the Meeting. And oh, and sorry, I did miss a director, David Wakelin, Director of Health and Community Wellbeing. And that's all the officers supporting the meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Caroline. Welcome, everybody. And do we have any apologies for absence? Looking at the screen, it doesn't seem we've got any apologies unless there's any officers that were supposed to be here.
No, no apologies received, John. And we, I would like to just read out the councillors for the purpose of the recording, the councillors that are present here at the meeting. So we have yourself as Chair, Councillor Clark, we have Councillor Payne, we have Councillor Barnes, Councillor Ellis, Councillor Gregory, Councillor Hollingsworth, and Councillor McRosen and Councillor Wheeler. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So item two is to approve the correct record, the minutes of the meeting held on the 8th of October 2020. And that's in the book there. So I'll move those. Give me a second there. Agreed. Okay, all agreed. Thank you very much. Item three, Declaration of Interests. Anybody wish to declare an interest in any of the items that in the following pages? I don't see any declared, so that's moving forward. Item four, which is the Prudential Code of Indicator Monitoring 2020/21 and Quarterly Treasury Activity Report for Quarter Ended 13th of September. And that is Alison, I think.
Yes, thank you, Leader. Yes, it's our usual quarterly monitor report on the position against Prudential Code and Treasury indicators that were approved by full council in March. And if I can start as usual with an update on the economy and interest rates. As previously reported, the economic update is dominated by COVID-19 and Brexit-related uncertainties. It is fair to say that even in the most stable of economic conditions, economic forecasting is a challenge, with many differing views coming from leading economists. Against current backdrop, most as soon as the ink is dry on an economic update, it seems to be out of date. You'll note in the report that the Bank of England's forecasts were more optimistic than those previously reported, with improvements in the forecast of the decline in GDP, albeit still expected to be significant at just under 22%. A downward revision of the unemployment rate from 9% to 7, 7.5%, and a rise in inflation due to projections for the increased demand in the economy. But since then, the GDP announced today, did show a bounce back in the economy over the summer by about 15%, which was positive, but during the tail end of that forecast period, the position began to worsen again due to the emerging wave, second wave of the virus and the national lockdown bringing further uncertainty and a downturn to economic forecasts again. And in response to that second wave, the Chancellor has announced extensions of financial support available in terms of the furlough scheme, self-employed support and new business grants to help shore up the economy up to the end of the financial year. And since then, we've had a further announcement on a possible vaccine in the near horizon for the virus, which brings even more the optimistic projections back to the fore again, with forecast job losses now in the range of between 4 and 6%. And a full economic recovery to pre-pandemic levels suggested might be as early as the middle of next financial year, although is accepted it could be the middle of the 2022 at the latest. However, even though that's a more, some optimism on the horizon, the impact of COVID in some areas of the economy remains very uncertain in terms of the changing behaviours such as a move towards working from home and the move to online shopping, which may have an ongoing impact on businesses and offices in the high street for some time to come. Brexit uncertainty, we tend to forget a bit about Brexit, but this is, obviously, we're coming to the end of the transition period on the 31st of December. We still don't have a trade deal, so that is, adds further to the uncertainty and is expected in itself to have a further drag on the economy. So based on the projections for the economy, the Bank of England has kept the bank rate unchanged at 0.1%, although some forecasters have suggested that a cut into negative territory was possible. This has been currently ruled out by the Governor of the Bank of England. So an increase is not expected until there is clear evidence that a recovery has taken hold in the economy. And it's expected by our Treasury advisers to stay at this level for the next two years. Therefore, forecast borrowing rates also remain largely unchanged across that period. So whilst the reduction in the P2B rates is still hoped for following the conclusions of the Treasury's consultation process regarding the potential restrictions of borrowing for commercial returns that we've spoken about previously at this committee, at this meeting, sorry. But the timing of that consultation process is still unknown. So if I can turn now to our overall Treasury activity during quarter two, which is detailed in paragraph 2.5 of the report. Firstly, I can confirm that all the Treasury activity this quarter has been contained within the approved limits for both the prudential and the Treasury Management indicators of affordability and prudence, with any variances from those initial estimates arising primarily due to the, due to the deferral of schemes in the capital programme, which is in the next item on the agenda. And with regard to investments, as always, the security of money takes priority over yield. And as cash investment rates are now very low and have continued to fall during quarter two, with some deposit accounts and the Debt Management Office now offering negative rates for shorter periods, our equated investment rate stands at less than half a percent. So returns are low, but they do still perform our benchmark rates, which are currently averaging at 0.1%, for the three-month period. So that's a positive position for us in terms of our benchmark performance. That equated rate for us is helped by the £1 million investment in the Property Fund, although returns for that are projected to drop by at least 1% this year due to the market conditions for property. As reported last quarter, the Property Fund was suspended due to COVID, which is normal practice when valuers cannot be confident that property valuations reflect prevailing market conditions. But as expected, that suspension was temporary and dealing in the fund started again on the 30th of September. A 90-day notice period was introduced for redemptions from the Property Fund, and that's just to help align the dealing terms with the liquidity of underlying assets. So the, I think, because the Property Fund is due as a long-term investment for us, those COVID-related impacts aren't cause for, don't give cause for undue concern. So whilst investment rates have fallen during the quarter and are expected to remain low, it is anticipated the outturn for interest will be broadly in line with the estimate of £95,000. And that's mainly due to the cash balances at the beginning of the year being higher than expected as the government paid cash upfront to fund the business grant scheme. With regard to borrowing, I can confirm that no new borrowing has been undertaken during quarter two. So our borrowing still stands at 9.8 million. The current capital programme does assume that we will need to undertake some borrowing this year, with the latest projection of our capital financing requirement standing at 15.8 million. This is primarily due to the Commercial Property Investment Programme of £5 million, which members will recall from the last quarter has been put on hold, firstly, subject to the outcome of the consultation on P2B lending terms, which seeks to restrict local authority borrowing for this type of scheme. And secondly, due to the risk prevailing in the property market due to the economic downturn. Now, you will recall that last year Treasury imposed an additional margin of 1% to all P2B rates across the board with no prior warning. And this margin is expected to be removed at the same time borrowing is restricted for commercial activity. It is therefore unlikely that any further borrowing will be undertaken during this financial year and until the outcome of that consultation is implemented. A review of the Commercial Property Investment Strategy will be completed at that time and recommendations for its future will be reported to a future meeting of Cabinet. So I'll leave it there, Leader. The recommendations are on page nine for members to note the report and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Alison. Page 29 on mine.
Apologies. There's a bit, there's a difference in the page number.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? Just as we are and probably most councils are all there. I want to tell you something. Michael?
Yeah, just to say thank you to Alison and, you know, let's hope that the consultation is concluded soon and we get a view about the P2B issue from government so that we can move forward in terms of, you know, what the expectations are around property investment and commercialisation. I just think it's deeply frustrating that we get different views, you know. A few years ago from the government that was very clearly about councils needing to commercialise and invest in property and, you know, not relying on handouts from central government. Now, all of a sudden, we've got a, seem to have a kind of reverse noise being issued by government saying, actually, we need to pull back on some of that. So I just think we need clarity and we need clarity urgently because, you know, I think Alison's presentation just shows that headwinds are still incredibly strong in terms of the challenges that we face financially. You know, and we've seen some of the challenges that have faced councils like Croydon in the last week. Issue a section 114 notice, the first council since Northamptonshire. And, you know, that, in no way can be laid down the door of this management of the individual council. You know, there may well be issues in that council, but we know that there are really significant challenges as well, not least the significant cuts that there have been in funding to local authorities from central government over the last decade. So, you know, a tough time, but I think Alison and her team deserve huge credit and our thanks. And thanks on behalf of the community as well, Alison, because, you know, the quiet work you do in the background as finance colleagues within the council means that we're able to protect the important public service that people rely on. So nothing further to add other than just to thank Alison and the team, John.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jenny, did you want to speak? Hello? No. Okay, then. Anyone else? Still one else? Just adding again, as I'd said previously, I think before you came in, Alison, about the amount of work that's going off to, that we're trying to do and you're trying to do, Andrew and everybody else is trying to do, to make sure that some of these businesses get the, get the money that's coming through, when it comes through. There's a lot to come through there.
Friday, hopefully.
You know, a lot of work, because I know when we went through, was it last night or Monday night when we went through it? I thought, I don't know, you know, you'd just come off one or two meetings that were across the county and then national things and things like that, trying to understand it all. And it is difficult because a lot of this is being made up as we go along, I think. But yeah, please pass on our thanks. But I'm going to move the recommendations there. The four recommendations, bottom of page nine. So the second did?
Yeah.
Yeah, we agreed. Thank you. Moving over to item six. We're going over to Gedling Plan, Quarter Senior Leadership Team, who's doing that.
And that's me again, Leader.
It's you as well, yeah.
Yes, so, yes, thank you, Leader. So yes, this is our usual quarterly budget monitoring environment report presenting the projected outturn for both revenue and capital budgets for this year. And this quarter, the report also includes a mid-year review of the medium-term financial plan that's been undertaken primarily to consider the financial challenges presented to the council by COVID-19. But to start with, if we can start with revenue on page, the revenue budget on page 30, I think. Are we on the right page?
Well, we're on 6, 5, 1, we're over.
So the.
Yeah.
Yep. So the table on page 30 shows that the revenue outturn is projected to be in line with the approved budget of £11.6 million. And that's after including an overall contribution from earmarked reserves of just under £2.3 million. Members will recall approving during quarter one, the use of £420,000 of earmarked reserves to ensure that we could maintain a balanced budget against the cabinet's maximum budget due to the forecast budgetary impact of COVID-19. The latest position at quarter two, quarter two presents an improved position in respect of COVID as detailed in paragraph 2.2 of the report. This is primarily due to the receipt of a fourth tranche of emergency COVID-19 grant funding from government of £167,000. And overall, this enables a transfer back to earmarked reserves of £100,000. And that's proposed in this report today. So it's to take account of that improved position. So that's positive at this point. So whilst the COVID-related budget impacts of £553,000 are detailed in the report, this represents a reduction in costs of £162,000 compared to last quarter. It is important to note that the position is before accounting for the more recent impacts of the second wave of the virus, which has required further service closures. So the full impact of that is not yet clear. We will continue to keep a close monitoring of that position. And if a further deficit arises in the future, we will look for the mitigation options which might be identified in your savings or use of reserves may be recommended in that instance to a future meeting of this Cabinet. And the full list of budget violence proposed for approval this quarter are listed in Appendix 1. And in addition to the direct COVID-related budget impacts, this includes deferrals on the efficiency programme, which totals £88,000 for this quarter. So the full year total deferrals now stands at £345,000 out of a total programme of just over £800,000. That's been partly offset by application of the risk provision in quarter one of £100,000. So it is worth noting that the whole efficiency programme is currently being reviewed by SLT as part of the budget process for next year to identify if there are any risk issues within there, to ensure that any new efficiency proposals are brought forward to replace those at-risk projects, if they're not going to be delivered. And the example, the one example is the one we've just talked about in the previous item, and that's the Commercial Property Investment Scheme, where our efficiency programme currently assumes that we will save £100,000 per annum from that project. So that's likely to be one that will be potentially dropped from the programme as we go forward. So turning now to the capital programme at paragraph 2.4 in the report. The total amendments proposed for approval is a reduction of just over £2.5 million. And all the schemes are listed there in the table on that page. The majority of the amendments being proposed for the deferral of schemes into next financial year with the reasons for the major schemes listed in the report. Items to note include Calvert-on-Entireprise Units at £1.4 million, which has not yet secured grant funding that's required for this scheme to progress. Business case has been reviewed and a new bid submitted to the LEP for the next available round of funding. And so we're waiting to see what the outcome of that might be. So some schemes have also been impacted by COVID-19, including customer services reception work, which is now being delayed until next year. The vehicle replacement programme, which faced delays in the supply chain because of COVID-19, and Hazelford Way industrial unit, which has been deferred to enable the review of the scheme viability. Because that was a business case scheme. The full capital programme is, and its financing is listed, is detailed in the report to Appendix 3. So if I can now move on to section three of the report, which is the mid-year review of the medium-term financial plan. It's not the norm for us to do a mid-year review, but because of the financial challenges arising from COVID-19, they are expected to have an impact well beyond the current financial year. And so a mid-year review does now form an important aspect of good financial management to ensure that we do achieve a sustainable financial position and support the successful delivery of the Gedling Plan as we go forward. There is a table, a chart in the report, which has come from a report that was commissioned by the Society of District Council Treasurers, which attempts to give an insight into the potential ongoing COVID-related impacts which are facing district councils in particular. This is based on a set of national indicators. It's not a precise look at local conditions. But it does, it does provide a vulnerability and a recovery index, which might help us to understand what those key vulnerabilities are for us and how well-placed we might be to recover from those in the medium term. And the resulting indicators place Gedling in the highest risk percentile in relation to other districts, indicating that we have a higher level of vulnerability to COVID and a lower ability to recover. This is primarily due to a higher-than-average number of people employed in lower-level occupations on below-average incomes, and that's coupled with a higher number of businesses and a higher level of unemployment considered to be in at-risk sectors. So this just provides an indication for us of the future challenges that we might face. Contained in the report is the whole range of key COVID-related budget risks that we face. I won't, I won't go into those in detail. You'll be familiar with those from, from the risks that we're facing during the current financial year. But just to say briefly that these, these risks include further response activity that we might be in need to keep undertaking due to resurgence of the virus. But hopefully with a vaccine on the horizon, that might, that might not materialise during next financial year. Increased local government funding uncertainty. And we do still, we will only be getting a one-year settlement this year. The Chancellor has announced that and we do have a deferral of the Fair Funding Review and the Business Rates Retention Scheme again, which means that meaningful financial planning is made really difficult. We'll only get a one-year ahead note of our, of our financial, of our government funding, which means that our, any forward projections for our efficiency programme are all the more difficult. So other, other risks that we have are new, potentially new budget pressures for any new services that we might, might be required upon implementation of the reset strategy. The forecast economic downturn is expected to result in increased demand for our services. In particular, there is the demand for welfare support and council tax reduction scheme. But we've also got impacts potentially on business rates and the property rental market as we have unknown, unknown consequences due to, due to, for the likes of the demand for office space as we go forward. The most significant risks for the council are presented in terms of the council's income streams. So fees and charges, we are likely to see reduced capacity and reduced, due to restrictions on capacity and potentially changes in customer behaviour. The key risk for us here is our leisure centre income. And we've also got risks in terms of council tax and business rates income, where we're likely to see a decline in the tax base due to increased CTRS. And following the suspension of recovery action during this year, we were likely to see an increase in bad debts provision, which mean that we have a collection fund deficit that which we're forecasting at around £300,000, which we are now able to spread over the forward three years rather than the usual one. In addition to COVID-related pressures, the council must also contain the impact of the 2021 pay award, which you'll recall was three-quarters of a percent above that estimated. It's an ongoing cost of about £105,000 per annum. And we will need to deliver new efficiency, new efficiency proposals in order to secure, secure resources for that on an ongoing basis. And we have actually included efficiency targets across service departments as part of the current budget process to ensure that we do deliver that. So all of those risks are reflected in the Medium-Term Financial Plan Reasonable Case Scenario, which is included at paragraph 3.6. So the key assumptions are listed there. We've got an increase in the minimum general fund balance to just to circle £1 million. You, you, you probably don't recall, but our minimum balances were falling quite a bit below that due to our net projected expenditure levels coming down each year. And I think what COVID-19 has done is really alerted us to the financial risks that we face. And actually, we feel that, well, I feel that an increase in the minimum general fund balance is really appropriate at this time. Also included in that table, in that table is a 1% drop in the council tax base and council tax yield due to CTRS. Fees and charges, we're forecasting currently at 10% of key risk areas, but assuming that's going to improve into year two and recovering thereafter in, to back to 2021 original budget levels. The collection fund deficit that I've just mentioned is already, is also reflected and the pay award. So you'll see in the table on page 44, the summary of the MTFP, including these assumptions, shows that without action to mitigate these impacts, the council's general fund balance would fall below minimum levels in 2022, 23, and the council would not be able to set a balanced budget. So that's just a year after next where that would fall if we don't have any mitigation. If those assumptions become reality. So that's a reasonable case scenario. In a worst-case scenario, income losses could be higher. Additional demand pressures may materialise. So that's just something that, that we need to keep track of as we move through this budget process. In the absence of additional government funding, options to maintain a balanced budget and secure a sustainable medium-term financial plan include the use of earmarked reserves or an increase in the efficiency programme. SLT have completed a review of earmarked reserves and identified those without specific commitments that could be reclassified for general use and applied to support the short-term budget impacts of COVID-19. And after accounting for the £320,000 that we've used so far this financial year, we've identified a further £400,000 that don't have specific approved plans, which could be reclassified for general use to provide interim, interim support to the budget, enabling any new efficiency targets that we might be required, that might be required to be deferred until later in the medium-term plan. So that would help us to provide us more time for COVID-related budget pressures and uncertainties to become clearer. And in the event that the actual budget position is better, any new efficiency target could be removed. So based on the tables that you see in front of you, to secure a balanced medium-term plan, it might be necessary to include a new ongoing efficiency target in the report to Budget Council in March. And this scenario indicates an ongoing efficiency saving of £400,000 might be required to achieve a balanced budget, as set out in the table at paragraph 3.7.4. However, the actual target recommended to council will be based on the final updated medium-term plan, which will be based on the latest information available in terms of both budget pressures and the actual local government finance settlement, which might include a new homes bonus that's not currently anticipated in the medium-term plan. So just in conclusion, the full impact of the COVID-19 pandemic remains incredibly uncertain. It is expected to have an ongoing impact on council finances, but as yet the amounts are not fully known. And in the absence of government funding or recognition of additional resource requirements in the upcoming spending review, this will present a challenge for us in continuing to maintain a balanced budget. But that budget process is underway and the recommendations will be made to council in March. But that budget process is underway and the recommendations will be made to council in March for any actions that are required to secure a balanced medium term financial plan, along with any recommendations for new targets and the use of reserves. So I'll leave that there, Leader, and the recommendations on page 29. Hopefully. So yeah, happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thanks. I'm depressed now.
Sorry, I'm always the doom bearer, aren't I?
When you get into it, I'm thinking we're sailing along, we'll do all right. Just clear before bringing results in on that general fund balance 2223. I've got £1,283,000. Am I reading that right?
Let me find the final page.
On page 44. £1,283,000, that is £480,000.
Yeah, that's right. So we've projected a closing balance of 1.3 million. And then if we, without mitigation, then we drop to a balance of £100,000. Yeah, which is below our minimum requirement.
Yeah. So the auditors will be picking that one.
Absolutely.
They'll be on it.
It would be a balanced budget for that period.
Yeah, anyway, Michael's going to Brighton and say he's just found a million.
Well, you know, we live in hope for the local.
Some of that money that comes in, all those millions that are coming in that we're supposed to give out, whether that goes somewhere. Michael, over to you.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to start, John, by saying that, you know, if that presentation from Alison isn't a clarion call to MPs and government to do what they promised at the start of this pandemic, which was to do whatever it takes, not to tweak around the edges, which is what we've seen, then I don't know what is a clarion call. And actually, if they don't want to listen to people like me, they ought to listen to people like Alison, who clearly is a very experienced public servant, cares about public services in the borough that she lives in, and has done a sterling job of walking through an incredibly difficult period throughout this pandemic. To be in a position where we are neither under or overspending in terms of revenue budget at this point in terms of quarter monitoring is a remarkable position to be in and is a testament to not only Alison, but also to Mike, to SLT, but also to every single member of the team, John, in the council, who have played their part in making sure that we have maintained public services whilst keeping an eye to the difficult financial challenges that we face. Hugely welcomed, you know, there's a £100,000 transfer back to earmarked reserve that Alison rightly highlights at the beginning of the report. But, you know, as Alison says, let's not be complacent about this. £100,000 in the grand scheme of things is a very minor cushion, a very minor reprieve. And a very minor reprieve, yes, because of the welcome tranche for funding that we got from the government in terms of Covid. But let me just spell out in context, John, about tranche for funding in terms of Covid. There are seven district councils in Nottinghamshire, and Gedling found itself at the second to last position in terms of that tranche for funding. We received £166,986 set against the number one council in the county, which was Ashfield, which got £784,201, nearly seven times the amount that we received in Gedlin. And the reason I just highlight that, John, is turn to the latter part of Alison's report. And again, you've got a well-respected group of public servants, Society of District Councils, saying that Gedlin has got high level vulnerability in terms of the impact of Covid, high number of jobs that are exposed to the impact of Covid in terms of the economic makeup we have in our borough. And yet we find ourselves at a poultry, a seventh in terms of the district councils in Nottinghamshire, and 262nd, John, out of 300 odd councils in the country. That's nothing short of a disgrace. And if that isn't a clarion call to our Member of Parliament to get off his backside in the House of Commons and start arguing for us as a district councillor and for the constituents that he serves, then I don't know what is. And I make no apologies for being direct about this, John, because this is about people's public services at the end of the day in our borough. And it's not good enough that Gedlin has found itself at the bottom of the pile yet again, just a day after an inquiry has been launched into the Towns Fund, where we got no funding as well. And we find out that ministers were handpicking constituencies based on marginal votes in the election. So, you know, as Alison says, difficult period ahead. But I think if you turn to section three of the report, a really diligent piece of work done by Alison and colleagues in terms of the medium term financial plan review, it sets out in black and white the risks that we face. It sets out in black and white the decisions that we're going to have to take at the Cabinet, but also collectively as a council next February/March, when we come together to decide the budget. But also, I think it sets out a way forward. And I think it sets out a way forward because of the sense of financial management of Alison and other colleagues that have come before Alison over a number of years. And may I just endorse fully Alison's professional decision around making sure that we've got a slightly higher minimum level of reserves. Clearly, putting away a bit of extra money as a buffer when the storm is still blowing outside and is likely to be blowing for a few more months yet is a really sensible position. So difficult period ahead, John, very frustrating. I just want to reiterate that the government needs to do what it said it was going to do, which is whatever it takes, not moving to a position of sharing the burden, which we now seem to be hearing from ministers. And let's hope that they use the spending review that's coming up to make sure that they do that. And let's hope that Parliament plays their role in that. Because otherwise, at the end of the day, it's not going to be me that suffers or you that suffers, John or Alison that suffers. It's going to be the constituents and residents of Gedlin who rely on these public services who will suffer. So, you know, this is an opportunity for parties, cross-party, to come together and find a way through this to make sure that we can defend the public services that so many people rely on in our borough. But I endorse the recommendations, John. I think it's an outstanding piece of work by Alison and her colleagues in really difficult circumstances.
Michael for that. The, I mean, you look at that, I think it's a spidergram, isn't it, on page 39 there? And you look at Rushcliffe and you look at us and there's only, you know, we touch bases apart from the river. You know, high recovery, low vulnerability and self-low recovery, high vulnerability. And I'd like to dig a bit deeper into that if we could do when we deal them with the MPs. I'll ask the same question, Alison, and to Mike, who is the chief executive. Have we received any acknowledgement of these, any help whatsoever from both MPs? That's Mark Spencer and the other one, Tom Randall. I asked him to the last one and he said, and now I'm putting you on the spot a bit. But all you've got to say, I haven't received any correspondence, I haven't received anything. That's fine. We'll do the politics.
Yeah, I personally haven't received any contact.
Thank you. Mike?
Leader, no, unfortunately, I've had no contact regarding any budget situation with either MP.
I think on this then that we should, on the recommendations, which I'll get to the right page in a minute, which is 29, that we add a further thing that we write to the MP from the Cabinet, if that's legal to do so, Helen, and, you know, expressing our concern. I don't want a big open round now, we can have that another day. But the clear signs there that unless this is corrected and the underfunding of this council, we are going to be in dire trouble in probably three, four years' time. And we need to, you know, we're putting up the flags there and saying, this is going to happen. It's because of the imbalance that Michael said. And I think the other money that went to other places was quite clearly a lot more than what Gedlin had. I think we're bottom of that list, Michael.
Yeah, we were second to bottom, John. With Rushcliffe, the only one behind us who got a flat £100,000. There was a small group of districts that got a flat £100,000. But, you know, Ashfield, £784,000.
It's wrong.
And Newark and Sherwood, £307,000. And yet the risks that Alison's articulated are there to be seen. So I think the call on the two Members of Parliament is quite straightforward. We're just asking for a fair crack of it. We're not asking to be treated specially. We're just asking to be treated the same way that other taxpayers across Nottinghamshire and across the country are being treated. I think you're right, John. This is not about party political fights. It's about simply saying, can you start?
Yeah. So aside in that to it, that we write to the MPs without expressing our concern. And then we'll get some help with the wording for it to make sure it's correct. So it'll be five recommendations. So I'll move that unless anybody else wants to. No more hands up. There are none there. No. Okay, then I'll move that with the added addition to it. Is there a second there?
Yeah, John.
Thank you. We're agreed.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Alison.
Okay, thank you, Leader.
I'll get the right page now. Here we are. Where are we? It's you again. Where are we? Gedlin Quarter Plan.
It's me now, Leader.
You're going to do it, are you, Mike? Right. I hadn't written it down here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Leader. Yes, this report sets out the performance data for the council at the end of quarter two, which takes us up to the end of September. It breaks it down into three key areas. But if I start with actions, there are 96 actions included in the Gedling Plan for a complete to date, and the other 92 are either in programme and planned to start in years two or three. And at this stage, we anticipate no problems with the delivery of those actions. Having said that, we are at the start of, you know, year one of a three-year Gedling Plan Programme. So in terms of performance indicators, there are 36 indicators. Thirteen of these are on target. Three have slightly just missed the target and six have clearly missed the target. There are also 14 indicators included in there, which are provided for managers and are used for tracking purposes only. So I won't go through the report in detail, Leader. But the report at paragraph 2.5 sets out some examples of really positive performance. And these are in the areas of housing benefit processing, our telephone call answering, the number of subscribers to keep you posted. Very positive news about returning empty homes back into use. The efficiency we've been doing in processing planning applications. Really positive again about increases in garden waste customer numbers and of course, the quality of food premises in the borough at the moment. So undoubtedly, this report clearly shows that the Covid nineteen pandemic has had an impact on some of our performance in certain areas. And that has resulted in us slightly missing the target. Again, these are explained in the report at paragraph 2.7. And highlighted within those are things like employability events, which clearly had to be cancelled because of the lockdown. Waste is still not quite there in terms of its performance, but it is pleasing to note that recycling figures are increasing significantly. The glass recycled at this point, but that's probably most of what residents home can do is consume glass products. So that's probably the reason for that. The provision of new and affordable homes is slightly behind. But again, because of the lockdown, it was anticipated and that should start gathering pace as we open up. Hopefully, when this current phase dies down. The time spent in temporary accommodation, again, because of lockdown, people couldn't really move accommodations. So families have stayed in temporary accommodation a bit longer than we would have liked. And of course, workforce sickness levels. We have done incredibly well, keep maintaining our services. We've missed the odd bin round, but on the whole, we've done and really achieved. You know, we've maintained our services to the high level we always have done. So that's very pleasing to note that. In terms of achievements, Leader, again, these are discussed in detail in Appendix 1. But some of these are worthy of being brought out and are worthy of special mention. And these are included in paragraph 2.8. And again, don't need to say any more about the continued work at the humanitarian centre. Fantastic idea, fantastic initiative, and still working really well and supporting the local communities. Again, Alison's probably not mentioned that in the last couple of reports, but significant amount of time has been spent by Alison's team in the processing of business grants and the use of the council tax hardship fund, again, supporting vulnerable residents out there. It also details the prompt reopening of our facilities after the initial lockdown period. Bit of a mute point now because some of them have obviously gone back and closed down for this four-week period. But once again, as soon as it's over, we hope to, as soon as we can, promptly reopen those facilities for the public to use. And finally, just on a personal note, I was really pleased to see the viewing platforms opened in July at the Gedling Country Park, something really positive in these dark times. So happy to leave it there, Leader, and we'll answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Michael?
I just, I think it's worth saying, John, because I think it's easy to forget this as we look at the, essentially, what is a report about the day-to-day running of the council. I just think it's remarkable that, you know, we've still continued to deliver the ordinary public services at a time where we've been facing the biggest health pandemic that we faced, you know, certainly since the Second World War, you know, maybe if not before that. And certainly one of the biggest challenges the country's faced in peacetime. And I just think that is hugely impressive, you know, of everybody involved in the council. Mike, the SLT, all those on the frontline who've been doing a really difficult job, you know, whilst they've also been worrying and their families have been worrying about that, you know, potentially catching the virus and the impacts of the virus on their own family and their loved ones, I just think is a phenomenal achievement. And you said, John, earlier in the week when we were talking on the phone, that, you know, the number one priority for all of us in the country right now is we have to get Covid sorted. We have to be getting rid of this virus and protecting communities. And the fact that we've still been able to keep our eye on the ball in terms of, you know, recycling, in terms of homelessness, in terms of trying to improve things for businesses, in terms of the community work that's going on, you know, the work in the parks Peter's been doing with Mel and the team around there. And David's been doing amazing work in community safety with the police colleagues, some really good stuff. And Stu Henry's been doing a great week with the Armed Forces Leisure Card, you know, with leisure colleagues. I just think it's really impressive that as a team, colleagues have not taken their eye off the ball on Covid. And Gedlin's had its own challenges with Covid, being adjacent to a very densely populated area in terms of the city, which has got its own challenges. But still, we've managed to do all of this and much, much more. And I just think the icing on the cake, if you like, is the way in which we've shielded throughout this crisis. There's got to be a national exemplar in terms of what's been going on down at Richard Herndon. And I say that not just because the council's been involved, but the way in which we've brought together civic society, community, voluntary groups, the food banks, you know, collective businesses pulling together. And just last week, we've raised £10,000 to help feed children over Christmas and the coming holidays. And then the government now belatedly realise that actually it does have a duty to get hungry children. But the council stepped in really quickly and our residents, John, and our businesses, basically like five or six days, raised £10,000, which contributions from council. There's some amazing stuff going on. And I think, Mike, you and colleagues in the council have been forgiven for slight slippage in terms of targets because I think you've done a damn good job of making sure that residents and businesses have been protected from this indiscriminate virus for the year. I think this is something to be celebrated, John. And I think, you know, it probably would work well, John, a letter from the Cabinet to everybody in the council through Mike as the chief executive to just once again say our thanks for the amazing work that's been going on.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're right there. I'll just bring something before I bring Jenny in. That was, we were discussing earlier, a letter to the, you know, to all the food banks, to the people who are making food, to the Rotary Club and all types of people like that, expressing our thanks and appreciation on behalf of the residents of the borough. So we could couple that with the one to our employees. Jenny, you've got your hand up?
I have. Make sure I'm, oh, I'm not on mute. Okay. Michael's articulated exactly what I wanted to say because I've looked through this and it's quite astonishing with everything that's been going on that, you know, the standards and the targets have been maintained. And I think we owe our staff a huge debt of thanks for the work they've done. The food premises scoring is really excellent, given that, you know, takeaways have been predominant sort of for quite a few months. But I particularly like to thank the Economic Regeneration Team for the way they've carried on progressing Carlton Square and Arnold Town despite all the difficulties, having to work from home. The Small Business Advisor and the Retail Advisor have been invaluable during this time and they couldn't have come in to post at a better time to support our businesses. So really, just to echo what Michael said, I think all the staff have done a tremendous amount of work despite all the difficulties. And as Michael quite rightly points out, they have families, they have relatives who might be vulnerable and they have their own concerns. And with that in mind, just on page 77, it talks about a programme, an assessed online mental health awareness product. Can you tell me if that's operational yet? Because it does concern me that people in departments, I'm thinking particularly of homelessness section, benefits section, where not only has the workload increased, but they will be dealing with people who are possibly distressed, people who have complex problems. And I would like to think that they get, all the staff are getting, you know, proper support to deal with some of the issues that they're facing. Thank you.
Thanks. Can I come in? Can I come in, Leader? Thank you, yes. David Arch has been leading on this and it is very, very soon. It's within days now because he asked me to write introduction for the training package last week, which I've done. So I fully believe it'll be in the next few days, Leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Peter?
Can I just support what Michael said about our staff? We must have the best staff in Nottinghamshire. We must have the best staff in Nottinghamshire. All our staff work extremely hard, got a lot of commitment to the people that they work for and the community they live in. And I think they're second to none in this county, and I think we should praise them as much as we possibly can.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think, Mike, the piece on two point five, where we've got, I'd highlighted those before, the the good work there, which was everything from housing benefit, which is important, particularly at these times. If we can better that, and they have bettered it, processing those in three days as against a target of four days. The other stuff that's on there, your major planning applications, all those types of things, against the background of what Michael was speaking about, against the background of Covid and everything else that's going on. I think we've done really well and we should be very proud of this and thankful that our, you know, our employees have delivered this, headed by yourself and the team. But if there aren't any further questions or anything like that, I can't see any more hands. I'll move those on page sixty-three, the two recommendations there. Seconded. Agreed. Thank you. Moving on to item seven, which is Grant. Are you there, Grant? Is there? I've got to gag you. You've been told to gag you. So you've got to run through it. Not that it's not important, it's very important, but we know how passionate you are. And you are the single person in this entire organisation that's got their eye on health and safety, which we're really thankful for. And you get a win by the fact it's an invisible win, because if you point people out to not tripping, falling, doing all sorts of silly things that might have happened had we not had your position. Anyway, I praised you now, so it's your turn.
Thank you, Leader, and thank you, colleagues, for your time today. So I just want to quickly introduce the report and the review effectively that has been done for the last financial year. So in relation to the council's role as an employer, this is where my role comes in. So it's separate to what Public Protection do in terms of enforcement of health and safety of businesses in the borough. But the Health and Safety Executive and indeed the management of Health and Safety Work Regulations requires that all employers, including the council, periodically review the health and safety management system. And effectively, I do that on behalf of the council. And every year, with the exception of this year, it initially goes to the Joint Consultative Safety Committee. And they'll be informed post today's meeting and any recommendations that come from the discussions today. So on the whole, what I wanted to point out is that twenty nineteen twenty was an incredibly busy year for health and safety and indeed a very successful year. And this year, I've worked with my director to sort of tweak the report and present it a slightly different way. You'll see on pages, on page eighty-nine, that goes into the appendix where the report is attached. Or in essence, my service had an internal audit, and one of the recommendations was that the report should come to Cabinet on a periodic basis. So this is the first time it's now being presented. And at the same time, there's also a recommendation for Cabinet to consider and approve if you feel appropriate, that the recommendations for delegations to myself and the Head of Paid Service are also agreed. So I just want to very, very quickly in summary, sort of go through how the report is laid out. So there's twelve key parts of the report. It covers the overall position and background about the work that is done and the overall sort of compliance and what my interpretation and sort of feel is in terms of how the council is performing. Our first ever annual review of declaring the entire risk assessments across the entire council. I'm not aware that any other council actually does that in the way that we've done it. But during that exercise, we had just under two and a half thousand risk assessments that we declared, which is quite a reasonable number, just to save the links. Well, what was very interesting was that the risks and the risk assessment profile across the council isn't evenly spread between each service area. So it won't come as any surprise to colleagues that the more high risk that department, the higher the number of risk assessments that are associated with it. So if you take, for example, leisure and Parks and Street there alone, and these are covered on page ninety, I believe, of your pack. Those two services alone make up fifty-three percent of the health and safety risk profile for the council. And the top five highest number of risk assessments for the council, those five services, they make up seventy-eight percent of all the risk assessments for the council, which may as come as no surprise to colleagues that that tends to be where I spend the majority of my time. So where the risk is associated, that's where I tend to spend a deal of my, historically, my resource supporting those services. You'll see generally as well, we're seeing a roughly, a very slight decline year on year in terms of how the projection of accidents are that we're experiencing at the council. And equally, on a very, on a positive note, we're seeing a higher level now of near miss reporting and hazard reporting. So near miss and hazard reports are effectively our free learning parts of the Health and Safety Management System. So we want lots and lots of those to be reported, because that's before people get hurt or harmed or property gets damaged. So having a very healthy near miss and near miss reporting is actually very good for us. So you'll see from the projections that are covered on page ninety-two, that's a very, very positive picture, and I hope to support that moving forward. And I suspect that the introduction of health and safety software back in twenty eighteen with the accident and incident module has had a real impact there. So moving it from a very paper-based system onto a very electronic system, which is a lot more straightforward and much more quicker to report these kind of incidents, makes it a lot more convenient for people to do so. And effectively, I suspect that's why we've seen a very positive rise in those levels of reporting. In terms of accidents and where we're seeing it, seeing those accidents across the council. It may as come, again, there's no surprise that leisure have the highest by far. And you'll see on page ninety-three that leisure had a hundred and forty-seven incidents during twenty nineteen twenty. And looking at the graph there, you think, well, blimey, that's quite a start figure. When you break that down in terms of how leisure have been performing year on year for the last seven years, it's actually the lowest number. It's a declining picture. And when you factor in over a million visitors that leisure welcomed during twenty nineteen twenty, zero point zero one percent of those visits resulting in an adverse event, that's a pretty remarkable result, really. And so moving on, so we also saw unfortunately a number of high-cost events last year. So you may recall the arson attack on the Onit Hill Park play area, that was over thirty odd thousand pounds in damage being caused. And of course, we had a very high cost event on the A sixty when we lost one of our freighters to a fire incident. And so generally speaking, it's been a particularly busy year with incidents. But that said, the quality and the level of reporting is improving year on year. Other key things that I wanted to point out is the level of training. So that continues to be a key work area for myself. This current financial year will be a very interesting comparator, but we'll come on to that next year. The level of training is very positive. There are some observations in there in terms of late cancellations for some colleagues and some lower attendance rates, and that will be closely monitored by myself and recommendations will be put forward to S L T to address that. In terms of inspections and audits, another key area of my work. This last year saw me have a slight change in tact in terms of auditing some relatively very civic centre-based departments that generally see a very low level number of audit reports. So that's, it came as no surprise to me that that was then reflected in the level of their scoring and the marks that they received. But we also, last year, I introduced a new set of software for marking audits. And effectively, that gives us a new key performance indicator for you to benchmark each service. So they all get asked exactly the same questions, and therefore it's a nice fair comparator year on year. And I do a certain degree, well, quite a portion of joint consultation as well, which is covered in section seven of the report, where I provide quarterly reports to the Corporate Health and Safety Group, and then with briefing notes. I also have some key partnerships that I'm involved in. So for example, across Nottinghamshire and a couple of organisations and local authorities from Derbyshire are also involved in the NOTS Risk Management Group, of which I'm the secretary at the moment. And that's a very important networking group where my fellow health and safety practitioners, we sort of share good practice and learning between ourselves. And I just want to very quickly point out some key achievements. So one was the, towards the end of the financial year, the Giving to Gaddling response required a very quick, well, a very expedited rollout of the volunteering policy. That was, effectively, that was being worked on over just over a year, and that was a really important piece of work to ensure that 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 part of the response was effective and delivered in a safe manner. Ironically, in September twenty nineteen, I attended a display screen equipment risk management course, which coincidentally was very useful in terms of developing our homeworking arrangements. So the assessments that we do at home and how we roll that out. I had great confidence that what we were advising managers and employees to do and the assessments that they were filling in, I had every confidence that that was a very good piece of work and they would stand up to be very helpful for as much as we can do, making colleagues comfortable at home. Moving forward into this year, with the level of emergencies and the current emergency that we're dealing with. So twenty nineteen twenty saw a huge amount of work by myself ploughed into the Brexit preparations. We had some significant flood events in June, in August, in November, and then again with the storms of February. And unfortunately, they did affect some work areas for me to be able to sort of continually to sort of develop certain areas of work. But that said, those risks and the risk for my service will continue to be logged and managed in accordance with the council's risk management strategy and its framework. I have a couple of work plans that I follow. So I have a work plan for health and safety, work streams, and I have another separate plan that deals with emergency planning and business continuity. And those work streams feed in any risks into the risk, into my own risk register for my service. And ultimately, anything that is of concern or I feel is a growing area that needs to be addressed, a report and briefing is done for S L T then to consider. I think just in conclusion that twenty nineteen twenty was in many respects an unprecedented year in terms of delivering a health and safety service whilst at the same time dealing with the unprecedented number of emergencies and incidents. But that said, it really was a very good year. Lastly, if I may, it's just that, it's to put forward is the, that's the way that it happens, I'm sorry, is the recommendation for the delegations for L one to L four to be considered and agreed. And that's it.
Thanks, Grant. Excellent, just normal. Any questions, anyone? Michael.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, John, and thanks, Grant, for the brilliant work you've been doing, Grant. And I think the report really encapsulates, you know, the importance of this work. And I think the, you know, bringing to life of the importance of issues around health and safety in terms of the example you used around volunteering for the Giving to Gaddling policy and the way in which that was expedited, I think is, you know, hugely significant. It really brings it to life and you deserve credit for working with colleagues from legal and other areas I know that we're involved in, in moving very quickly in that regard. I don't know whether Helen's still on the call, John. I can't see her on my screen, but I just want some some sort of guidance and advice from Helen. The Constitution, Helen, makes reference to a number of delegations that are already in place. There's a delegation to Joint Consultative and Safety Committee that talks about the right to be consulted on and make recommendations to the executive in respect of any health and safety functions of the council to the extent that those functions are discharged in the authority's capacity as an employer. There's also references made to delegations by directors in terms of being able to take actions, Helen, in relation to the specific act that's referred to in this report. And so I suppose I just wanted to understand, because it's not elucidated in the report, if we're, if these are an additional delegation below those delegations that already exist? Or are the delegations that are going to supersede and replace the existing delegations in the Constitution? And then just finally, if you can follow my thread of thought, Helen, from a governance perspective, just some assurance, I guess, to understand about, are we saying there's no delegation that exists in terms of these specific delegations at the moment? Or are we saying we're moving them from an executive function to grant in this instance, but actually whoever occupies Grant's role in the future as title? I just want to understand the thread of it, and because you will appreciate, Helen, that this is an area where there can be a lot of public scrutiny and criticism if something goes wrong, and actually elected members, what's the right term, not negating, but foregoing their responsibility in this area can be an area where members can then hold themselves open to quite severe criticism, actually in some instances, legal challenge. So I just, I just want to try and understand what sits behind the recommendations that you just talked me through from a governance perspective. Is this superseding what's in the constitution, or is it just an additionality over and above those delegations that are already there that make the relevant acts that are cited, if you can follow my thread of thought?
Thanks, Helen.
Thank you, Leader. So we did try when putting the report together to, I guess, separate the executive functions from the non-executive functions. So Grant is bringing this report to Cabinet today, bearing in mind the fact that as an employer, we have certain legal obligations under the Health and Safety at Work legislation. The role of the Joint Consultative and Safety Committee is simply a consultative body. So J C S E does not have any delegations or powers other than to be consulted by Cabinet in relation to this employer function or to come forward with recommendations. So as Grant has explained, historically, a report has gone into J C S E that's similar to what you see before you as Cabinet. But what we haven't done historically is put a report in front of Cabinet. And actually, it is good practice, because as you explain, councillor Payne, ultimately, it is Cabinet's responsibility to have that oversight and control over the health and safety legislation where we are acting in our capacity as a employer. And if I just pause there, so that's very, very different to where we're taking, for example, enforcement action against other businesses within the borough. So that's where the Public Protection Team, led by Sam Palmer, will be going into certain businesses within the borough, because we share that enforcement responsibility with the Health and Safety Executive. That is a non-executive function that sits with Environment and Licensing Committee, so that's very, very separate. So in terms of the delegations that we've got in front of us today, whilst there is reference in the Constitution to J C S E and those recommendations and consultation from the executives of Cabinet, there aren't currently any specific officer delegations around health and safety. So the reason that Grant has drawn out L one to L four is because you might recall a few months ago, we brought a report into Cabinet around business continuity, and you approved the policy, a number of documents, but you also approved the delegations at L five to L six. So what we're trying to do today is to say that there aren't any officer delegations in place. And what we would like is for Cabinet to agree the officer delegations that are at L one to L four. So those are for the Head of Paid Service to make amendments to the health and safety policy or associated documents. And also for the Health and Safety and Emergency Planning Officers, so that's Grant, to make minor variations. So again, this replicates what you will have seen in lots of other reports that come before Cabinet. So where there are minor sort of grammatical changes, there's a requirement, for example, to change job titles following a restructure or a bit of a shuffle, that actually those are very, very much administrative delegations. They allow a tidy up of documents. And at L three, that's to agree procedural documents around guidance and protocols. So again, these are very, very much operational documents. Grant will produce those documents fairly regularly. Again, operational matter that should be sitting with officers. The final one, the L four, is probably where you might have a little bit of nervousness as members, bearing in mind that overarching responsibility that you have, as councillor Payne has explained. But what we're really trying to achieve there is But what we're really trying to achieve there is where, for example, Grant sees something, so he might be. Spotting some activity that's being undertaken by council employee or spotting some activity undertaken by. A volunteer on behalf of the organisation or a contractor on behalf of the organisation. If he feels that there is an immediate danger and that activity should cease immediately, that gives Grant your authority. So you are saying to Grant, we are happy for you to suspend that immediately. That will be a temporary suspension while discussions can then be had. So that's that's effectively, again, an operational delegation that we're asking from Cabinet. That won't be a long term suspension of an activity is just where Grant is saying, I need to stop that now to prevent any. Risk to any health and safety of any employee or any volunteer or a member of the public. Any, I guess, permanent suspension or cessation of activity would be an executive function. That we would probably take back to the leader to make a decision on. Hope that helps, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there is any. Anything unclear in that.
Okay.
Respond, John. That's really helpful. I mean, in essence, you know, what I'm taking from it is we're putting in place specific delegations. To make sure that we're covering ourselves because at the moment there are general delegations. I mean, there is a delegation on page hundred and forty one, three point nine of directors that talks about. The responsibility for risk management, having regard to advice from the Chief National Officer and other specialist officers. And it does actually reference health and safety, but it doesn't cover the specifics that that we're referencing here. I guess the only final thing that I'd say, John, and Helen sort of alluded to it and helpfully talked through the practicalities of how that last. Delegation works is I just think in practice it would be really helpful if. Once we approve these delegations, subject to the vote, John, that's going to be. I think Grant or whoever is in that office informing the leader, even if there is temporary action taken, would be really helpful, John. Because I just think you need to be on behalf of the Cabinet on these things because. We need to formally change the report, but I think it can just be captured in the minutes that it's important that if if a temporary action is taken with that delegation. There's just a notice to you, John, because I think otherwise, if there are questions down the line and somebody says, well, were you aware, leader? You know, or was the relevant cabinet member aware? I think you can just, we can get around that by actually, Grant, just simply notifying in a short email to you, John, to say this actually happened on a temporary basis. But I mean, on the basis of the advice and background that Helen's given and further to the report that that Grant's given, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to ask that question because it is it is an important area. And as Helen says, we have got quite serious responsibilities in this area and you can find yourself on the wrong side of the wrong side of the law if you're not careful.
If I might just respond to that. So councillor Penny, as you can appreciate, this is a new report, annual report that's coming into Cabinet. There's no reason why we can't, I guess, reflect the sorts of arrangements that yourself and councillor Ellis will be familiar with. Where we we regularly update you in relation to any information governance issues or RIPA issues. So behind the scenes, if there's anything you need to know in your portfolio holder roles. There's nothing preventing us from mirroring those sorts of arrangements with health and safety. So that's absolutely not a problem. Grant can, you know, if we need to produce a formal sort of quarterly report to the leaders, if there's anything. Significant, the needed reporting, otherwise just an email report to the leader. And obviously, if the leader has any concerns about anything that's been reported in and wanted anything escalating into Cabinet, then. Grant can produce a report for the next Cabinet to update wider Cabinet members on that issue. So more than happy to take that back and make sure that arrangements are in place to deliver that in future.
I think that's the sensible way forward, Helen. I think it's a really helpful suggestion. Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you. Peter wants to say something.
Can I just support what has been said today? I think it's important now with with our staff, with modern equipment and the speed we have to work at it now. It's important that we make sure we do our safety conditions right and proper for our staff because they work damn hard. And some of the some of the conditions they work under, it can be quite difficult. So I support everything what's been said this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay, is anybody else? Anybody else? There's no one else, so good discussion there. Thanks, Helen. Thanks, Michael. I'll move the recommendations on page eighty five. There are two there. Read. Yeah, okay, moving on now to service manager planning policy. Is that Joe?
It is.
She's somewhere. There she is. Yeah.
I am here.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you very much. Yes, this report relates to the Authority Monitoring Report. And members will be aware that this is a report prepared annually. And this latest report covers the period, the financial year two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. Now, the Authority Monitoring Report basically has three purposes. Firstly, to set a baseline of information for the borough. Secondly, to monitor progress on policy preparation. And thirdly, to monitor the implementation of the local plan. So for us, the core strategy and the local planning document. And because of that context, it includes within it the latest position with regards to our housing and employment allocations. So for clarity, it's perhaps helpful to say that the AMR, it sits alongside our Housing Delivery Action Plan. Which has been updated recently and also our five year land supply, both of which are prepared annually. But those, all of the documents have had slightly different purposes. So the updated monitoring report is attached as appendix A to this report. And I'll just pull out some of those key updates that relate to the position with regards to development plan documents over the period covered by the report. Firstly, all policies of the core strategy and the local planning document are now being implemented. And they're all monitored through this AMR and that monitoring will inform the preparation of future planning policy. In terms of preparing an update to the local plan and progress has been made on the preparation of the Greater Nottingham Strategic Plan. And that's being prepared in conjunction with Nottingham City and Brotso and Rushcliffe Councils. In conjunction with that, a robust and comprehensive evidence base is being prepared. And that is prepared in relation with other authorities within the conurbation within Nottinghamshire or Aero Wash Borough Council as appropriate. The AMR sets out how the council continues to fulfil the duty to cooperate with neighbouring authorities. And the AMR also explains that we've adopted adopted an updated statement of community involvement back in September twenty nineteen. In relation to neighbourhood plans, we now have four within the borough and the most recent for Linby was adopted in May two thousand and nineteen. As picked up by the AMR. And finally, in relation to supplementary planning documents, we've adopted the Willow Farm Development Brief as informal planning guidance. In December two thousand and nineteen. And so that's just pulling out some of the highlights of the AMR. But the recommendation is to ask Cabinet to note the content of the report covering the period, April two thousand and nineteen to March two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks, Joe and team for the report, a very useful update. Again, an area where there are going to be many challenges and have been over the last seven months. I was reading this morning, there's been a thirty percent in reduction in completions during the first nine months. So achieving housing targets is going to be challenging, to say the least, but very useful information. I was interested in one, two, seven. And I know the figures are out of date. It's the carbon dioxide emission estimates. For transport, which which is a very small reduction. I mean, we don't know what it is now, obviously, it's two years ago. But it's a bit disappointing, isn't it, when you see the small reduction in figures? When we've got targets by twenty thirty to to become more. More efficient in our use of energy. But thanks very much, Joe, it's a useful update and it shows that we're doing all we can to achieve the the targets we've set ourselves. Thank you for the work. Thank everybody else as well in the department for their contributions.
I will do. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Can't see any more hands raised. So again, thanks, Joe, for that. I think you've got the next two items as well.
I have indeed.
Recommendation one, one, one is the, that's not Ringing Ambulance or something like that. That's the page number. There's one recommendation which is noting it, so I'll move that. Can we have a second? Yeah, we're all agreed. That's good. And we're moving over. I think the next one is Bestwood, is it not? Yes, Bestwood.
That's correct. Thank you. Yes, this is the first of two reports relating to updated conservation area appraisals. This first one is for Bestwood. And the Bestwood Conservation Area was initially designated way back in nineteen ninety two. And a conservation area appraisal was adopted in two thousand and five. The guidance and best practice is that these appraisals are revisited every two, about every five years. So this one was was long overdue for an update. And so we've needed to take into account changes in best practice in terms of how to undertake appraisals. And also to reflect changes that have happened on the ground since the last appraisal was undertaken. So the appraisal process allows for an opportunity to revisit the conservation area boundaries as as part of that process. So attached to the report is a revised appraisal attached at appendix one. And a plan showing the recommended boundary changes, which has been pulled out and attached separately as appendix two as well, for the sake of clarity. And so in preparing the updated appraisal, we've been working closely with the council's Conservation and Heritage Officer. And we also undertook an initial informal consultation exercise with Bestwood Parish Council, who provided some valuable comments and assistance at that stage. The adopted appraisal will be able to inform future proposals relating to the area. And as part of that appraisal, we have a separate management plan, which sets out broad planning guidance, which will help us to determine planning applications. And I've confirmed that the draft appraisal and management plan have been subject to a consultation exercise which took place in July and August. And a number of comments were received and I'll come on to those shortly. In terms of the content of the appraisal, the document concludes that the conservation area in its setting has changed. Unsurprisingly, quite significantly and over the fifteen years since the last appraisal was undertaken, both in terms of. Maturing of vegetation in relation to Bestwood Country Park, providing a particular setting for the conservation. Conservation area, but also in relation to built development that's taken place in Bestwood, being one of our key settlements in the core strategy. And developments identified through the two thousand and five local plan. Another feature of a conservation area appraisal is to identify where there is scope for improvement. And there are effectively two mini development briefs attached to the appraisal. One for land west of Church Road and one land surrounding the recreation ground. And in essence, those briefs really sort of set parameters of how we would like to see those areas come forward for development. So they're setting some some helpful guidelines for developers so that any development will be compatible and appropriate in a conservation area setting. Moving on to the proposed boundary changes, there are five proposed boundary changes in total. In essence, four areas are intended to be removed from the conservation area and one additional area added. So the areas to be removed from the conservation area, firstly, land north of Maze Rise and School Walk. Really on the basis that this comprises a modern development. And the second area is land between Park Road and Broad Valley Drive. This includes the car park area at the entrance to Bestwood Country Park and also some more modern housing development. The third area is land south of the Sycamores on Moore Road. This area is now allocated as H eleven for housing. Part of the area is, and it's also the sports ground and industrial estate. And therefore, sorry, this area is really about housing allocation. So because of that, it's not not appropriate to retain it within the conservation area. The fourth area to be excluded from the conservation area is land founded by Moore Road, School Walk, Church Road, Village Hall and the Bowling Green. And this is one of the areas that the mini development briefs relates to. The area to be included within the conservation area is Bestwood Village Sports Ground. It's understood that this is shown to have existed in on a nineteen hundred ordinary survey map. So therefore, there's historical interest there in that it was a sports ground supporting the mining settlement. So in terms of the conservation, the consultation, sorry, that was undertaken on this document. As I say, consultation took place between July and August. And a total of twenty five comments were received and those are all summarised and included in appendix three attached to the report. Most of the comments raised, not surprisingly, relate to the removal of the four areas from the conservation area. And there was concern expressed that by removing those areas from the conservation area, that those areas would now be promoted for development. Also, concerns were raised that there would be less protection for the trees in the conservation area because that designation was being removed. So in response, we are commenting that conservation area designation isn't in itself preventing development. In essence, it's shaping how development comes forward and making sure it's compatible with the surrounding area. And in relation to the issue about trees, we have undertaken an assessment on site and. Introduced tree preservation orders to on those trees which we feel warrant protection as such. In terms of other comments that were raised through the consultation exercise, a number of comments were made on relating to the level of housing growth that's taken place over recent years in the settlement. On issues such as the lack of shops and facilities in the area about transport and parking issues. And whilst, of course, these are important issues, they're not directly related to the conservation area appraisal and will need to be. Considered and responded to through other sources. And there were other comments also about the consultation itself, about the length and the complexity of the document. And so, as I say, appendix three summarises the responses that were made and sets out our response to each of the comments raised. But really, in conclusion, there were no significant changes that needed to be made to the conservation area appraisal as a result of the comments made. So in terms of the recommendation for this report, Cabinet's asked to approve the updated conservation area character appraisal and the management plan, which is attached at appendix one. And that includes the recommended boundary changes which are pulled out as appendix two. Subject to that confirmation, we have then various administrative exercises to go through. We need to notify the Secretary of State of boundary changes, publish the documents and advertise the boundary changes as appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Any questions? Michael.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to disagree with the recommendations that I made. There's the boundaries for the conservation area. But Joe, I do think it's really important, John, as a council and as a cabinet, we listen to them, consider responses to the consultation. I thought they were really thoughtful. It's clearly a concern in the village about overdevelopment. And if you read the report, you know, Joe, huge credit. Amazing to see the history. The coal and iron, you know, the best. Remarkable, you know, architecture in terms of the Victorian terraces with the sash windows and the bonding in terms of the English. A reminder to be one of our gems in the borough in terms of a historic residential area. As being linked in with the industry. If you look at that picture, it changed from two thousand and five, where you can see the. The road and now this. I just thought that was a remarkable sort of, you know, almost capturing the sort of changing time of a place like Bestwood Village. So I just think two things, John. I'm not going to disagree with the recommendations. I think they've been made, you know, sensible. It's just to put a marker down that we need to, we need as a cabinet and a council to reflect on the, you know, the well made arguments about concerns around overdevelopment. The well made arguments, I think, about trees, you know, we we heard it before that people want to see trees in and around urban areas. And as Joe said earlier, we've got issues around climate change. Also, John, I just think, you know, not a decision today, it's a conversation perhaps with councillors Ellis and Gibbons. But I do think encapsulated in this word, there's an argument for. and Gibbons. But I do think encapsulated in this word, there's an argument for this area being a priority area in terms of culture and heritage and history. You know, there's a huge amount of culture and heritage in history here, the country park and the headstocks and things. And I know Mike, as chief officer, gives attention to, you know, progressing ideas around, and I know there are other areas in the borough that have got historic sites. There's an argument here that this might be a, you know, a kind of first area for us to focus on, Mike, when we do start to ramp up some aspects around history and heritage. Because I just think we've got to preserve this heritage. It's part of the fabric of history. And I just think it's a really impressive piece of work, Joe. And I found it fascinating reading through it and looking at the pictures and seeing the development. So it's perhaps a future conversation, John, for us to have as a cabinet maybe with the ward members and probably like Joe involved, and got some thoughts around history, right here. So it's just to put that marker down, John, really.
Thank you. Jenny?
Yeah, thanks. Once again, Michael's stolen what I was going to say in parts. I thought it was absolutely fascinating. And to read about the sort of genesis of the settlement from the mining village and the ironworks is absolutely fascinating. I did wonder if some of the red brick had been locally produced. It doesn't say in the report whether it actually came from our local brick works, because it must have been going at that time, because some of them went into some bank station. So that was fascinating. Like you, I looked at the picture of the the headstocks and then the trees covering it. And it's quite astonishing what a softening effect trees have, a good lesson to us. I quite understand what you're saying about the comments that were made about removal of areas. But if you look at the management plan, I think it's robust enough to actually allay some of those fears in terms of any development that might come forward. I don't have a problem with any of those being removed, or the inclusion of the other one. Again, I think in terms of history, I think you're right. And it did occur to me, do schools actually get get these documents to actually encourage them to do a piece of work in school on their own area where they live, and understand how the settlement came about, and the history of the buildings that surround them? Because we don't look, do we, when we live in a place? We don't tend to look around until things are pointed out to us. So but no, it's a great piece of work, Joe. Thank you and others for producing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything what's been said today, I think it's important that we remember what took place in Bestwood Lodge and all that area when years and years ago. But I think what worries me more than anything is that road from the city, which goes by the village into Papawick, that is a very, very busy road there. And I just wondered if we need to look at that more than we probably have done in the past. It's a very fast road. I know they've got some bumps along there, but it is a very fast road. And sometimes I wonder whether we need to look at it in a different way. I don't know how to do it, but I think it needs looking at, because it's a through road, very busy, and it takes a lot of traffic. And I think it's something we have to look at. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Henry?
Yeah, yeah. I spent many, many, many times in Bestwood Village, obviously stayed there quite a lot when councillor Beeston, my grandad, lived there with Alice. And I've got very fond memories of the village in terms of the areas I used to go play. You know, there's been changes over the years, obviously, but I've got fond memories of all the buildings there, going into the miners' welfare, looking at the clock across the road, going up to the headstocks, all those sort of areas that we used to go and play in, and just, you know, the history there. I've got fond memories of that whole area, you know. So I think it's really important that, as Michael said, and Jenny, that we ensure that we do everything we can to preserve the history of that area. In terms, I just want to make a quick comment on school. I think it's really important that schools look at local history. I know locally that, I think it's Bob Massey in Arnold has actually been into one or two primary schools to talk about local history. I think that's really important. Young people really take quite a strong interest in their own area, in their local backyard, that they like to find out about how their town began, or how their village began, the history around the, you know, all the things that might have happened right back from the Iron Age all the way through to the Industrial Age. Really, 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 really important that young people understand the past, so that they've got a sort of knowledge of today. But also, in essence, you need to understand your past to understand where we're going in the future as well. So fully support what Jenny was saying there. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, John, can I just, I think, you know, you and I, John, visited the Friends of Bestwood Country Park. And I just think on the record, you know, Sue McDonald, and Rob Carlyle, and Jill Costello and the team up there, as Jenny says, the amazing work they do in terms of not just the park, but actually the industrial heritage and history. You know, I just think it's phenomenal. And I'm really pleased Henry said what he's just said, because we're nearly two years since we lost Dembo, bless him. And I think he'd be dead chuffed that we were giving this real discussion today. Absolutely love the village. And I think he'd be really proud of it, really proud of that you've done, John, and the rest of the team. I think he'd be really, really chuffed, you know, that Bestwood's getting the credit and spotlight. So I'm glad Henry's mentioned him. He'd be delighted.
You? Anyone else? And no more hands showing. We've got to move the recommendation on page 177. Seconded. Agreed. Yeah, we are. And still final one, Joe, please. That's Lamley,
I think. That's right. So this is a similar report, and actually slightly simpler. So I'll be able to counter through it a little bit more quickly. I'll be pleased to hear. But thank you for your comment on the Bestwood report. And I think sending links to the updated reports, once they're available to the local schools, is an excellent idea. And we can certainly follow that up. So this report, as I say, relates to the updating of the Lamley Conservation Area Character Appraisal. So the updated appraisal is attached as Appendix A, and in a separate plan showing the boundary changes is attached as Appendix B. So the conservation area itself was designated back in 1976, and the area boundary was extended in 2007, as an appraisal undertaken at that time. The appraisal, again, was drafted in consultation with the council's Conservation and Heritage Officer. And we were also able to undertake informal consultation with Lamley Parish Council and Lamley Local History Society. And at that time, they provided many valuable comments and much assistance that we were able to take on board. We undertook a consultation exercise on this appraisal in conjunction with, at the same time as the Bestwood appraisal, so back in July and August of this year. But in fact, no further comments that were received on the draft appraisal. And so in terms of the key findings of the appraisal, the conclusion was that the conservation area was generally in good order, with most properties and open land being well maintained. And there are few further opportunities for development within the conservation area. In terms of proposed boundary changes, and there are two. Firstly, a minor extension to the boundary at the southeast corner, to effectively include the whole of the footpath running from the cemetery to Spring Lane. This is really to reflect historical plot boundaries, that it's felt it's important to include within the conservation area. The second is a minor change to exclude some of the modern properties close to the church. That's at the bottom of Steel's Way, just facing the bottom there, which I felt it's not appropriate to include being modern properties. And so the recommendation for this report is that the revised Conservation Area Character Appraisal be approved, including the management plan, and including the recommended boundary changes. And similarly, the same administrative processes would need to be followed by a subject to cabinet approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Jo. Moving on. We're all happy? Jenny? Jenny, sorry.
So just again, this is another fascinating document. I learned such a lot about Lamley that I didn't know before. And I used to live at Loudham and visited Lamley a lot when I was a youngster. But again, you don't necessarily notice places when you're very familiar with them. So it's great. And I think the changes are absolutely reasonable and proper. So again, Joe, thanks very much to you and your colleagues for an excellent read.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay, then I'll move the recommendation on to... Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on now to, where are we? Oh, it's back to Helen. So records, retention, and disposal policy.
So thank you very much, Leader. It's been a long meeting, so hopefully I won't keep members of Cabinet too long. So as Cabinet is aware, as part of information governance, it's really important that we have clear processes in place to govern records management. And the records retention and disposal policy is one of a number of policies we have in place as part of our information governance framework. The current policy we have in place has been around for some years. And whilst we have made amendments, it's fair to say that it was in need of a thorough review, particularly following the introduction of the General Data Protection Regulation. So that review has been carried out diligently and methodically by Sarah Klapkowski in Legal Services in consultation with service managers across the council. And I would like to personally put my record on, so my thanks on record to Sarah for producing what I consider to be not only a document which is fit for purpose, but also much easier for officers to follow. So I trust the report and the policy is self-explanatory. I don't intend to say much further, Leader, although I'm happy to answer questions if Cabinet has any questions. You'll see from the recommendation on page 353, that Cabinet is asked to approve the updated records retention disposal policy at Appendix One.
Thank you. Any comments? No. Okay, I'll move that then. Move it on the 353. One item there proves updated records retention disposal policy at Appendix One. Seconded?
Agreed, John.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ellen. And it's still with you now, because we're moving on to equalities update.
Thank you very much, Leader. So again, if I may introduce the report, councillor McCrossan might want to come in straight after me to add anything. Excuse me. But thank you, Leader. So the first point I would like to make is to give you an assurance as Cabinet that the council does have arrangements in place to meet its duties under the Equalities Act. However, last year, an equalities review group, which comprised officers, key officers around the council, started to review the council's current approach to equality and diversity, and consider how the council could further promote and deliver the equality objectives. Unfortunately, as you can imagine, this work was halted as a result of COVID-19. But it did restart earlier this year. And I hope you will see from the report and the appendices that I will introduce in a minute, that significant progress has been made under the direction of councillor McCrossan, supported by councillor Fox, who was obviously with us at the meeting today as policy adviser. So I'll take it that you've all read the report, and I don't intend to go through it in detail. But if I may just highlight a few points, and in particular introduce the two appendices for you. So as set out in paragraphs 1.9 and 1.10 of the report, you'll see that the Local Government Association has produced an equality framework for local government. And the most recent version of that was produced this year in 2020. And that document is designed to help authorities review and improve their equality's performance, and not only meet, but also exceed the public sector equality duty. And we've used that document to produce our own equalities framework and action plan, which is attached at Appendix One to the report. And I hope you will see that there is already a significant number of measures in place to contribute to the equalities and diversity agenda. But also, we've identified some gaps. And that's where the LGA framework document has been a really, really useful document for us to refer back to. So the framework document identifies gaps, and also a number of actions are proposed. And if this document is formally approved by Cabinet in due course, and I'll come on to the process in a minute, an operational action plan will be created with lead officers and timelines for delivery identified. And then it's envisaged that that document can then be used to update the portfolio holder, so councillor McCrossan in her role as lead for equalities, but also the Strategic Equality and Diversity Group that Cabinet is being asked to establish as part of this report. So we can use that document to update both the portfolio holder and that group on progress on a regular basis. And that action plan will also interpin, I believe, the preparation of an annual equalities report to Cabinet, which is also proposed as part of the framework and action plan. So that's that particular document. And as I say, I don't want to go through it in any great detail, but happy to take questions in a bit. In addition, we currently have in place a number of documents that reflect the council's commitment to equality and diversity. However, it's proposed that we introduce a comprehensive equality and diversity policy. And a draft is attached at Appendix Two. So this will replace what we currently have in place. And this document has been prepared by taking good practice from other local authorities into account, particularly those who are achieving the excellent standard under the LGA framework. They obviously have very, very good policies and processes in place. So we've taken the best bits, and that's included in the policy document that you see at Appendix Two. So today, Cabinet is asked to approve the equality and diversity policy and the framework and action plan for a period of consultation of four weeks. And it was felt that publishing both documents together would enable consultees not only to see the council's strategic position set out in the policy, but also understand what that means in practice. So hopefully you'll agree that the framework and action plan provides that context. It sets out what we already have in place, and what we intend to do to improve our position. So if the recommendations are agreed today, the consultation will begin the week commencing the 16th of November, so that's next week, and close the week commencing the 14th of December. And we propose to issue a press release at the launch of the start of the consultation. And during the consultation period, the documents will be available on the council's website, promoted through social media in the usual way. But we will also specifically contact partners, stakeholders, and community groups to ensure awareness of the consultation across the borough. It's obviously very, very important that we target those groups that support and represent the individuals in our community that have protected characteristics. So we're working with our community relations colleagues to identify the relevant contacts. So once the consultation is ended, a report will come back to Cabinet. And we're proposing that that comes back in on the 28th of January, for Cabinet to consider the consultation responses, and agree a final version of the policy and framework. So finally, if I might just draw Cabinet's attention to the other work that's been carried out to review the council's equality policy in respect of staff and employment. And you'll appreciate that as a staffing policy, this falls outside the remit of Cabinet. It will be considered through JSCC and ACSE, but we felt that it was really, really important that Cabinet had a good understanding of the overall suite of documents that the council will have in place to support equality and diversity. So I'll leave it there, Leader, but I am happy to take any questions. The recommendations are on page 433 of the agenda pack.
Thanks, Helen.
Hi. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Leader. Can I just first say a thank you to the officers, clearly in terms of, you know, many officers that have contributed to this work, and obviously Helen and Rosie as the lead officers. Can I also thank councillor Catherine Fox as my policy adviser? We've all worked really closely together here in terms of the support. And it's really important in terms of this piece of work, as you can imagine, in terms of being able to really demonstrate that we are really working as leadership and community together to improve the lives in terms of the equality and diversity of our vulnerable members of our community, and our members of our community in terms of the protective characteristics. So I think the council are committed to reach out to the community, to give a voice. It allows us all to shape the future direction of the council. I think this is an excellent way forward. And we have made great strides. And I think this work that we're doing, and this consultation, will just bring us together at a time when we absolutely do need to be brought together as one to shape our direction in terms of equality and diversity in the future. So I'm really looking forward to getting the consultation back. And there's an element of real dynamic sort of a way forward here in terms of working very much in small groups, with community members, looking at the voluntary sector, looking at service users, looking at all... looking at the voluntary sector, looking at service users, looking at all our partners to ensure that we we're doing our absolute best for all our 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 community and particularly those ones that have those protected characteristics. So I welcome the work going forward and I and I and I welcome the consultation and then the return to Cabinet in January. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just to give credit to, uh, both, um, Viv and Catherine for their leadership on this. It's a hugely important area for for the council. And, you know, credit to Helen and and Rosie and all the other staff who have been involved as well in in pulling together such a comprehensive, uh, report. And it covers all of the protected characteristics. And I think the way in which it's open, we're going to be consultative. Uh, as Viv says, it's about trying to bring in insights and experiences not only those communities that don't feel they have a voice or feel that they're underrepresented, but people who have got expertise in this area, people that can point the council to a way in which it can do better things, uh, in terms of the different areas that are are expressed. And this is this for me, you know, and Viv's encapsulated this. And I know, having spoken to Catherine, she has as well, is not just about how the council behaves, how the council looks and how reflective the council is of its communities, but also how we lead in terms of the place that we represent as well and make sure that those who are from minority communities don't feel persecuted, don't feel that they can't be themselves, uh, who they want to be in their workplace or in the community they live in, or in terms of the activities that they carry out, uh, in terms of their ordinary lives. And, you know, clearly in 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 recent months, you know, the the Black Lives Matters movement has really bought into sharp relief the issues that are faced in terms of race and structural inequalities that still exist in terms of race in the country. We still know there are big challenges in terms of, uh, the LGBT community. And particularly at the moment, you know, I see and I hear from people in terms of transgender, the community and the persecution that they continue to, uh, face. Uh, amongst all the other challenges as well that we still see in terms of, um, equalities. And the, you know, the COVID pandemic writ large has really shone a magnifying glass over this issue. You know, if you look at some of the work that was done in terms of the disproportionate way that the pandemic has has impacted in terms of black minority and ethnic, uh, communities. Um, you know, it's just really shameful in the way in which the country hasn't been geared up to and public services haven't been geared up to protect some of those communities. And I was saying to 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 Mike Hill the other week that Dorian Lawrence is a really fascinating. I know, John, you worked with the the Lawrence family when you were chair of the Police Authority. Dorian Lawrence has written a really fantastic piece about how the public and private sector and society more widely can improve itself and step up to the plate in terms of making sure that everybody, irrespective of their gender, sexuality, colour, background, uh, race, religion, has an equal opportunity in their employment, but also in life, uh, to get on. And and I just think this is a massive step forward. We're not complacent. We don't think this is the answer or the solution to, uh, you know, making the unit that we represent and the council a better place, but it is a significant step forward. And and I think, um, you know, Viv and Catherine, you deserve, from a political leadership perspective, a huge amount of of credit and thanks for the work that you've done in this area. I think this is an absolutely fantastic, uh, piece of work and I know you're really proud of it. And I think it, you know, it sets out a path forward for us. So so well done and thanks to the officers involved for bringing this report, uh, forward. As somebody who's from the LGBT community myself, I'm really proud to see, um, the the allyship and the allegiance and the ambassador, uh, role that that Viv and Catherine have played in terms of this. So, um, credit to you and thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Catherine, do you want to say anything?
Um, thank you, Michael. I just want to say thank you. Um, thank you to officers. Um, thank you for Viv, for the opportunity to be able to work on this. Um, it's immensely important piece of work. Um, equalities is the responsibility of all of us. And it's such a a massive subject that's, um, its implications are are so important. And, um, I'm I'm just grateful for the opportunity to be able to work with Viv on this. Um, and it demonstrates councillors reaching out and giving the community a voice and to be able to, um, shape the future, um, direction of of this policy. And, um, it just confirms that we are listening to our community. So I'm grateful to, um, everyone that's worked on this and thank you for your comments.
Thanks, Catherine. Can I can I just come back to you, Viv, and to and as well? Uh, well, and to you, Catherine, is how how are we going to make sure this is not a tick box exercise? It's something that's going to be positive and it's going to be the role, the future role of this council to be involved with. How are we going to drive it? We're going to have a, you know, is it going to be reports back like we've had the other on planning and all sorts of things like that? We're going to have a constant stream of reports to see where we are so that we're making sure we keep.
I mean, if you look at the structure, John, I can't find it on the page, but there's a really nice diagram actually, which demonstrates how we're going to hold accountability. So although I've got the lead portfolio, what we're going to have is we're going to have a really clear group, which is a cross-party, uh, leadership group, really, which will involve, um, councillors, officers and, um, you know, um, members of community as well that will help drive this. But our plan is, our vision is that, um, looking at our protected characteristics, that we will form local community groups with the expertise, the voluntary sector, service users that will will hold us to account because it's there that the 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 knowledge and the expertise is. And and and, you know, it's it's them that we need to be listening to. So that's how we envisage the structure to be, John, uh, really. It's it's going to be a two-way. We're we're going to be listening, we're going to be actioning. And it's certainly, I think, to echo what Catherine's saying, although I've got the portfolio responsibility, this is a whole, um, council responsibility. And we need a structure. And I think if you look at the diagram, the structure gives us some teeth to make sure that, um, we are acting as ambassadors in terms of, because I think that's what the LGA talks about a lot in in its good practice. And when we've looked across at excellent councils that have led on this, it's about that. It's the ability to be down on the grassroots, listening to what people are saying, action it and have a structure in place that is, um, not a tick box. We absolutely do not want to create a tick box on this. We have to be doing action. We have to be listening and we have to be actioning. Otherwise, we will have no credibility at all if all we do is come out with big words and do nothing about it. We absolutely do need to listen to what our community is saying.
Thank you. And and the only ways of, um, you know, well, once we get through this a little bit more and learn a bit more of getting this through, I'm thinking there's lots of organisations from Scouts, Guides to, uh, uh, to to church groups, to all sorts, where, you know, they're probably not to hit the button on this. Um, so, uh, you know, look at that in the future. I don't know if that's Michael's or mine. It's Michael's is ringing. Um, so you can answer it, Michael. The, yeah, so we can, you know, we can spread some of this 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 about. And also, Helen, I'm pleased to see that they're used of looking for best practice because often people go around the houses 20 times and it's somebody else has done it. So why not adapt it to your local circumstances? But, you know, saves a lot of time and sometimes it saves quite a lot of expense.
Yes.
I was pleased to see that.
Yeah, can I say, John, you know, in terms of the structure around the policy advisers that we put in place, I have to say Catherine's worked really hard, Catherine Fox, councillor Catherine Fox. Because part of the policy adviser role is to help the portfolio in terms of looking wider than what we're doing. And Catherine has really helped by really scoping really good practice across the country and found some really excellent examples of other councils. And absolutely don't reinvent the wheel. Look at what they're doing and let's see how we can adopt that and move forward.
Okay, are there any further comments? If there aren't, the recommendations, they're on page 433. Move it. Second it. Agreed. Okay, thank you very much. We're moving towards the end now. Um, we move forward plan, which we just have to note, I think, when I look at it. So do we agree that?
Yeah.
We agree that? Um, I don't see there's any other items on here. I need to say, I think, Helen, this is your last cabinet, isn't it? Helen?
Yes, it is, Leader.
Yes.
Uh, just to 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 put on, you know, on record our thanks for for all the work. Because you've got a long history like me in Gedlinbury Castle. And we're simply part of the furniture and you are moving on. And you're going to God's country, as I told you the other day. You're going to Derbyshire. There may be some dispute here, but, uh, uh, you know, the, uh, but really heartfelt thank you. And we're not always going to agree, we never will with lawyers, uh, or anybody like that. But on a personal basis, we've always got on. So thank you for myself, uh, and from our group and hopefully, you know, you'll be successful. I know you were successful in 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 the job that you've taken, uh, in the next county. And thank you. Can we record that, Mike, please? Okay, are we agreed?
Yep.
Thank you. Michael, sorry.
Yeah, John, I just, 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 you know, I've worked very closely with Helen over, uh, I think, like 10 years I was deputy leader in in various portfolio roles and, uh, particularly in terms of communication in other areas. Helen and I have had some fierce disagreements about these. But I say this about Helen and I think it's, uh, hugely significant in terms of the contribution she's made to the council and to the local community. She has to be one of the people who has biggest amount of integrity I've ever met. Uh, you know, and and she stands her ground for very good reasons. She stands her ground to protect the reputation of the council and the local community. And she does that unflinchingly and unwaveringly for very, very good reasons. She's a very, very thoughtful person. She never makes contributions without having considered what the impact is on on the community, but also the council in terms of public service. And and I think the public sector and public is all the better for people like Helen. And the fact that she is unafraid, possibly, but constructively and considerably to elected politicians like us, I think, makes, uh, communities like Gedlin a a much better place. So I think she deserves a huge amount of of credit and has made a a contribution to the council, I think, in the community that even she isn't aware of. You know, Gedlin's reputation in part is down to that, that fierce, uh, level of integrity and that deep level of, in terms of, of, you know, Helen's history and her heritage, really, a legal profession. You know, the skill she brings to, uh, to the bear. And she's certainly protected a number of us, John, as as elected officials, including including myself from getting ourselves in hot water. So, uh, thank you, Helen, from me. Uh, personally, I've enjoyed working with you closely and and the best of luck at, um, at Derbyshire. You'll do a really good job for them.
Thank you. Peter?
Can I just thank Helen for everything she's done for me and Sandra while we've been at the council? I've been on a long, long time now. You must be about the fourth senior legal officer we've had since I've been on this council. And I would say probably you come out on top of the shop. So I wish you well for the future and enjoy it.
Thanks, Peter. And with that, we're close to me. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.